Welcome to the Monday, December 12, 2022 Planning Commission. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. First order of business that I'd like to take is I'd like to welcome our newest member of the Planning Commission, Christian Fenstermacher, is one of our alternate committee members, so welcome to the team. Thank you. With that, has anybody got any changes, additions to the agenda for today? With that, I'll take a motion and a second to approve today's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Cheddar and Ringstead as a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Today's agenda is approved. Next on the agenda is to consider approval to Monday, November 14, 2022, meeting minutes. Any changes, additions, deletions? Seeing none, I will take a motion and a second to approve Monday, November 14, meeting minutes.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson and a second by Ringstead. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The minutes from November 14 are approved. With that, we have two agenda items today. Both of them are public hearings. And let me just say how this will go a little on the public hearings. First of all, staff will give its report on the hearing materials. The Planning Commission members will then question staff about the report. And then we will ask the applicant to give any information that's needed. We will also ask questions of the applicant. At that point, we will motion and second to open the public hearing. And at that point, anyone who would like to speak can come up to the microphone and address the committee. And behalf of my fellow commissioners, now I'd like to welcome everyone and read the public hearing procedures. If you wish to address the commission, I'd ask you, please approach the podium, press the button to turn on the microphone, and then clearly state your name and address for the official record. So everyone has a chance to speak, we ask that you limit your comments to five to seven minutes in length, and you make concise statements of fact pertaining to the application. This meeting is the official public hearing, and your primary opportunity to be heard on the matter. The city council has no obligation to accept further public comment. In many cases, they do not, so please do not hesitate to speak up. And with that, I will turn it over to staff for PDEV 33.
Thank you Chair Teeman, members of the Planning Commission. First agenda item tonight before you is a request for a preliminary plat to be known as Radermacher's Second Edition. So first, I'll kind of go over some of the characteristics of the area parcel itself that's to be considered for preliminary plat. So Mark Crowe of Java Properties, on behalf of the current property owner, has applied for approval of preliminary plat, again, to be known as Radermacher's Second Edition. The subject property is located just southwest of Highway 13 and Panama Avenue, along Village Lake Drive, next to what is currently a Tractor Supply. It's currently the last undeveloped parcel for Radermacher's First Edition. Some of the, across from Panama Avenue, the other outlots within the First Edition have been platted and developed into what is today McDonald's Restaurant, Pro Service Automotive Repair, and then Tractor Supply again. The current proposal calls for one lot and one outlot. Total site area is 3.148 acres. The proposed commercial lot would be total .93 acres, while the outlot would total 2.22 acres. There are no wetlands existing on the site, and the topography is relatively flat. Access would be proposed, and I'll talk about this in a slide or two here, proposed from Village Lake Drive. And the parcel is zoned C2 general business and is destined to be zoned in our 2040 plan, C2 retail general business. It is in the Shoreland District of Crystal Lake, which is just south of the property. Because of that, both the Prior Lake, Spring Lake, Watershed District, as well as the DNR, have reviewed the application, did not provide any kind of substantive comments for the application. Sanitary sewer and water mains are available to the site. So getting into the preliminary plat request itself, again, one commercial lot and one outlot there. The square footage of both of those lots and acreage is on your screen in front of you. The plan would be to develop the first lot into a Caribou Coffee drive-through, while the outlot would remain vacant until future potential site plans would be considered for that lot. So with the site being 2.2 acres, you could fit two, three other businesses on there. The minimum lot area for our C2 commercial district is half an acre, so there's definitely room to put multiple businesses in the outlot. As far as traffic goes, and kind of being one of the main considerations with this being a drive-through coffee location, I'll cover some of the characteristics of the site plan here. The site includes 15 parking stalls. The vehicle stacking requirements for the restaurant and the drive-through specifically have been met. And as far as entering, exiting the site, left-turn lanes are proposed for entering from Village Lake Drive, as well as turning south onto Heritage Lane, southeast, which is where you'll see there is a number of townhome complexes just south of that property. In working with staff, as well as third-party traffic engineers, we've determined that the traffic generation estimate for the property is not found to have an adverse impact on the existing roadway system. I won't go into greater detail right now, but if you have some questions about that, we have some information, as well as our Assistant City Engineer Monster here to help answer any questions that you might have in that regard. As far as staff comments, some of the major comments that the applicant received in response to the application are currently in progress. A lot of those have been addressed. The current rendering that you see in front of you is actually the second iteration of the site plan, so a lot of those engineering comments have been addressed already. There will be an access easement required for the entrance into what will later be Lot 2, Lot 3, depending on how it gets developed. And one of the main, or one of the comments in our engineering staff memo is that this will be the only entrance to and from any additional lots that are developed in this parcel as a whole. So any other businesses that come in here would be entering through here or would share a joint access through this commercial or Tractor Supply entrance. The only additional staff comment that isn't shown in this plan is a result of both Minnesota DOT recommendation, as well as fulfilling our own zoning requirements for a proposed walk-up window for the coffee drive-through. There is a seating area, as well as a walk-up window, so you can walk up and order coffee. The comment is to create some sort of sidewalk connection from the sidewalk that's currently along the north side of Village Lake Drive to the seating area and walk-up window as a way to ensure that pedestrians and people who aren't in cars can use the coffee shop and be a customer there. So with that, staff is recommending approval of the preliminary plat with the following conditions. Developer shall obtain their required permits from other state local agencies. Developer shall revise the plans in accordance with the recommendations contained in the Minnesota DOT memorandum, as well as the comments that have been made in our Public Works Department memorandum and Community Development memorandum as well. And with that, our recommended motion would be a motion and second to recommend approval. That should say Radermacher's Second Edition Preliminary Plat, subject to the listed additions or others that may be added or modified by the Planning Commission. So with that, I'll take any questions or comments that you have for staff.
Thank you for the detailed report. I have no questions. Commissioner Colberg, questions? Commissioner Cheddar?
No questions.
Commissioner Ringstead?
No questions.
Commissioner Johnson?
No questions.
Commissioner Tennyson?
No questions, thank you.
And Commissioner Fenstermacher?
No questions.
All right, that's a quick and quick one. Alrighty, would the applicant like to address the commission at all? You're good, okay. With that, then, I will take a motion and a second to open tonight's public hearing on this item.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion, Commissioner Cheddar, and second by Ringstead. All those in favor say aye.
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 Today's public hearing is open. Would anybody like to address the commission on this agenda item? Last one or two more times, anyone? I'm seeing no one rise, so with that, I will take a motion and a second to close the public hearing on this item.
So moved. Second.
We have Commissioner Colberg and Commissioner Cheddar. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The public hearing is closed on this item. With that, I think this is a really nice project, I have no concerns with it. Commissioner Colberg?
I'm supporting this, I don't see any problems with it. I think it's a good addition to the area. We've been waiting for a Caribou Coffee for a while, I think, and now it's finally coming. So I'm supporting.
Commissioner Cheddar?
Yeah, I have no concerns. I think the report addressed the questions around traffic, which is, I think, going to be an obvious question. And I'm excited to see the infill parcels developed, so.
Commissioner Ringstead?
I think it's a great project for this site. It's been undeveloped for quite a while, and to get a Caribou there and a second outlot, who knows, that outlot may be purchased and developed sooner than we think, so I do him in support.
Commissioner Johnson?
I'd agree with previous comments. It looks like a great project, I think it fits the area well. Obviously, it's well laid out, and I give my support.
Commissioner Tennyson?
I have no additional comments.
And Commissioner Fenstermacher?
Also, I'm supportive of this project. I do like the additional comment of the sidewalk connection, that's a good add for this, so.
With that, then, I will take a motion and a second to recommend approval of the preliminary plat, subject to the conditions stated.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Cheddar and Colberg, all those in favor of today's motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Preliminary plat is approved. With that, we will move to our second agenda item, PDEV 34. Staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. The next agenda item for you is an item that those of you that have been on the Planning Commission for the past year may recall seeing this in the spring, but the developer is, has a new proposal to share with us tonight. The project before you is Jeffers Pond Apartments, which is a major PUD amendment to the Jeffers Pond Plan New Development on the north side of Prior Lake. The subject site is located near the intersection of County Road, Highway 42, which borders the northern portion of the site, and then County Road 21 to the east of the site here, and it's highlighted here in red. It's an undeveloped site, designed more for residential and a commercial mix, and has access via, the main access to the site is going to be via the roundabout that immediately west of the project site. What is proposed before you tonight, while I'll get into the details, is going to be 140-unit, total three-story market rate apartment building with additions of 35,000 plus square feet of future commercial land uses on the site. As you can see here from the aerial, and I'll show you on the next slides, the Jeffers Pond area is mostly built out and developed from the PUD that was originally designed in 2005. The remaining areas are this area, as well as the other area that is just to the west of it, along Highway 42. As I said, the Jeffers Pond PUD was first designed in 2005 as a planning development and had a variety of mixture of residential densities and commercial uses. At the time, in 2005, it was seen that upwards of nearly 500 housing units could be added into the site with varying density, all the way from low, medium, and even high-density neighborhoods, as well as all the streets, public park system. Elementary school is located there, Jeffers Pond Elementary, our fire station number two, and currently one commercial development for Little Explorers Daycare, which opened just earlier this year. So it's no longer under construction, it's recently opening. And then Outlet B is right across from it. Proposed 177, 97-unit apartment building that was proposed by Carlston Development, if you recall that earlier in the year. And then remains is the other outlots. This is Outlet C of 11 acres, and the remainder of Outlet A that is the area that was left over from the daycare addition recently. So just going through some of the phases, the Jeffers Pond development phases that were as part of the project. The first phase not only had the elementary school, but also some of the areas of low-density residential. As it progressed from 2005, post-recession, other phases of the project were included, revised, altered throughout, finishing with Little Explorers being the most recent developed phase in the commercial node. And then both this village area or Jeffers Pond Outlet C that we're looking at currently, as well as the Preserve at Jeffers, which is that Carlston Project 197-unit apartment building that was approved previously this year, yet to be constructed. And this would be the end of the Jeffers Pond development once these areas are constructed between the Carlston, this area, and then the remaining commercial area that is on the other side of Little Explorers. In 2015, a land use amendment was created just specifically kind of for the northern area of Jeffers Pond. It was created in line of putting in some of the townhome complexes that are part of the Cove development area, that was more recent residential development. This has been since amended to that Preserve at Jeffers Pond Carlston Development, the 197-unit apartment building. And what we're looking at currently here is this area over here. This was, again, a conceptual land use plan amendment that was basically devised and approved by the city council in 2015 to identify the needs both for high-density residential and commercial aspects in this area. And you can kind of see the square footages that are in place on here. That's the key that when you considered this project in April, that the Planning Commission looked at, especially for the commercial square footages for the project that were highlighted specifically for the Outlet C area here, or what is basically west of the Jeffers Pond Channel, is the dividing green line, if you would, there in between the east and the west. So when looking at this, this was the proposal that was before you in April of 2022, just this past April. They were looking at actually doing it all in residential, with two apartment buildings, was going to be upwards of 221 units, in three-story apartment buildings. And the Planning Commission offered a recommendation, denying the project or did not recommend the project to the city council. The applicant, following that, chose to withdraw their application, go back, revise their plan, and is back before you tonight with their revised site plan. So this is what their proposal is currently. It is for a 140-unit, three-story market rate rent, or apartment building that is highlighted here in yellow on the south side. That would be constructed as part of their initial development phase, as well as the gray parking lot areas and the stormwater ponds that you see in the central area of the site. The commercial designation to the north would be for future commercial land uses, but it does identify and designate over 35,000 square feet of commercial land for that site with additional parking. Obviously, some of this parking would be shared in between the two as well. Speaking of parking, when looking at the apartment parking that's going to be constructed just in general, 238 stalls, 140 of those stalls are underneath the building in the underground spaces, and then 98 surface spaces as well. The commercial would accommodate some of future spaces as well, and they would also, as I said, share a mixture of parking between the two. I already mentioned the site is being 11 acres in size, and the access for the whole site would be via the roundabout access that is already constructed to this point and remains there today. The applicant will go, I'm sure, in a little more detail about their concept of their building and what they're constructing, but here's just a conceptual elevation of the building itself, a mixture of colors, varying materials. The materials, if you noticed in your, in your report, they do not meet the specific criteria of our architectural guidelines. However, the mixture of materials, they have both vertical and horizontal siding profiles, the mixture of their glass, stone work in throughout the building, and their varying height and profiles of their elevations going in and out with those wall profiles do meet many of the intentions of our architectural design guidelines. I'll remind you that this is a PUD, and so they can alter some of those and modify some of those architectural standards as part of the PUD process. City staff does believe they've done a good job of showing that alteration and providing for some breakup of the building, if you would, in the profile, as well as the color and material mixture. So we do, we do find that favorable from their architectural standpoint. The major PUD amendment, as I mentioned before, Jeffers Pond has been in the works since 2005, and there have been over 10 major PUD amendments throughout its history. Basically, we undergo these major PUD amendments every time we kind of get another phase of the development that comes in, just because Jeffers Pond is, as a whole, and if I refer back to that map that showed the kind of the conceptual commercial residential layout before, a lot of those things at that time don't include all of the engineering specs of grading, drainage, utility access, parking, and the standards. It's more of a high-level conceptual rendering and goal-setting for setting those parameters of square footages and unit types. And so every time we get a more specific end-user, whether it be commercial or residential, and the city undergoes a major amendment process with the application to more, provide some more finite characteristics of that, so. So the, the PUDs show that they provide a flexible approach to a development. And in this case, that flexible approach, in modifications that developers requesting, is in the height of the building a little bit, is a little bit taller than our general height requirement for this area. And the developer, I think, has, has just a slide that they just wanted to highlight on that. But it's, the height of their average building still does meet the intent of our city code. They've got some other peaks, as you can kind of see from that conceptual drawing, that go a little bit taller in overall height. They also, and excuse me, it is a four-story building and stuff. I think I said three-story a couple times, as you can see just from the windows, it is a four-story building. But the, between the height, the parking requirement is not quite up to two parking stalls per unit. With apartments, we have seen that as being something that's agreeable, as long as it's into that 1.7, 1.75 range or higher. They're showing at least that range of that 1.7 or 1.75 for the apartments. And as I said, they're actually even showing a parking lot that will actually mix and blend with the commercial aspects of it. And when you think about parking for an apartment building generally, you have those parking needs in the early morning or evening hours when people, residents are there, opposite for commercial hours. So the use of a joint parking facility is actually something that is desired from our perspective. It decreases the amount of overall parking needs for the users as a whole, which decreases the amount of hard surface on the site, which decreases the amount of stormwater and other accommodations that we need to design for it. So all things which are better and more efficient for the environment on that aspect. The other aspects of a, of a PUD is it provides more efficient uses of the city street utilities that I just mentioned. In the aspects of the Jeffers Pond PUD, parks and trails have been designed throughout its history, and this would connect to those parks and, to those trail systems that are already in Jeffers Pond. It would fulfill a requirement much like the Carlston Development is, that is across the street for a high-density user in Jeffers Pond that we currently do not have for residential aspects. We have the medium-density townhomes and those aspects, and the low-density single families. So because of that, city staff is recommending approval of the major PUD amendment for this 140-unit apartment building and the 35,000 square feet of future commercial land uses, which, when the commercial land uses come back in, you might see another PUD amendment, just because we don't have those defining exactly their, their parameters. But this does allow the necessary space for those commercial land uses. It does jive with the overall comp plan and, and concept plan that the Jeffers Plan Project had in 2015. And it does mirror some of the recommendations that you provided the applicant in April and direction to go if they wanted to pursue their project to the city council and further. So I can take any questions you might have at this time. The applicant's here as well, and they have some short presentation of information to provide you as well. But with that, this would then, after your recommendation, this would then proceed on to the city council for their final action, most likely sometime in the new year. Thank you.
Thank you very much for a lot of detail there, Jeff. I have no questions. Commissioner Cheddar, questions?
Jeff, you mentioned the height requirement. Is that, was that a max that we're going above, or is that a minimum that we're?
It is, Commissioner Cheddar, it's actually a maximum that we're going above. I believe the maximum height at the peak of this one is around 52 and 45 is the general height requirement maximum that we have.
Good, thank you. No other questions. Commissioner Colberg?
There was also some discussion about the exterior finish being varied from the standard.
Yes, Commissioner Colberg, as I said, with the exterior finishes that you see in that conceptual rendering, they've got both hardy board, board and batten, a hardy board siding, stone, veneer, as well as the windows. So obviously, the glass work itself, and some metal accents that you have not only around the windows, but in the, the metalwork of the framing and some of the other architectural aspects. The percentages of the materials don't quite hit all of our percentage requirements for, for our city code. You may recall Little Explorers, the last amendment we had, had a very similar situation with their profiles. But because of the variation of the profiles, the materials, the colors they're choosing, they're still meeting a lot of the intentions of our city code. They just don't meet the exact, specific percentage number. And because it's a PUD amendment, that is something that they can ask for a modification to. It's not just a traditional straight zoning.
So part of this that we need to consider is whether to allow that much variation from the standard.
Yeah, that would be correct, Commissioner Colberg.
So we've got a number of things involved here, the height, the exterior finish, the size of the building. What are all the details of the amendment?
Those are the most of the modifications, Commissioner Colberg. The parking requirement, they're just a little bit under that parking requirement, but as I said, they've streamlined that in their joint parking facility agreement that they would have ultimately with the commercial areas. And in this site, it does mirror the, the aspects conceptually of what we desired at Jeffers Pond for high-density residential in this area. So the city staff does see those modifications as favorable, given the product and the design layout that they have for the site. It does fit the site very well for the, for both from a pedestrian or vehicular standpoint in accessing it.
Thank you. Commissioner Fenstermacher?
I have no additional comments right now.
Commissioner Tennyson?
I've had a couple of questions about the, the parking. So how many guest parking spots are there available at the site? Has that been determined yet?
Yeah, Commissioner Tennyson, that might be a good question for the applicant when they come up and stuff. I don't have exactly details, but it's a good question if you want to hold that for when the applicant does their presentation.
The other question I have is the land that's directly south of the building and directly west of the building, is that land that could be developed further? Or is that going to be?
Let me go, go back to a good slide here, I'm just going to go back, sorry, to the front. Okay, to this, Commissioner Cheddar, or Tennyson, you said to the southwest?
To the south, so it looks like there's a little pond there. So, just south of the building itself, looks like the building isn't taking up all that land, so that's land that wouldn't be developed, that would just be?
Correct, yeah, Commissioner Tennyson, this land, there's a pond there and so that would be not a buildable area for the, for future development.
Thanks.
Yep.
Commissioner Johnson?
I just have a couple of questions on the commercial square-foot space that's left available. Can you go forward a couple of slides to, I think it was the last time that there was a PUD amendment? Yeah, up right there. So, the two thousand and fifteen PUD had two hundred thousand square feet in commercial space planned, is that accurate?
What was, yeah, so I, sorry, to give you a little more background on this one, two hundred and seventy thousand square feet was what was designated or designed prior to two thousand and fifteen. In two thousand and fifteen, that was reduced down to eighty-seven thousand square feet of impervious surface, or excuse me, of square footage of commercial land. And the Little Explorers, as you can see there, is sixteen thousand seven hundred and so what this slide is showing is that there is still a need, based on what the council designed in two thousand and fifteen to have eighty-seven thousand square feet total, that there is another need of another seventy thousand square feet in commercial land to be designated for the future of Jeffers Pond. And as you can see here, some of the red bubbles here show those areas that would meet that seventy thousand square feet. The area that we're looking at right here is this area right here on the Outlet C of what Rachel and Vincent Development are showing and they're showing a potential of thirty-five thousand square feet here for future land uses in this area. It has showing about thirty thousand, so that does jive within that allocation.
Okay. No further questions.
Commissioner Ringstead?
So Jeff, if approved tonight and by the city council in two thousand and twenty-three sometime, this would close out all of the residential development within Jeffers Pond, correct?
Yeah, forcibly, that would be correct because between the Carlsen project, which is on this site here, that was already approved by council earlier this year, and then this residential project would be here, conceptually, that would leave just the remaining commercial land development for Jeffers Pond in the future.
Last comment and I don't expect you to remember this, but do you recall with the project that was approved earlier this year to the west, what the percentage of parking to units was? Was it two-point-oh or was it less than that?
I believe it was less than two-point-oh, yeah, I believe it was somewhere around one-point-six or somewhere in just north one-point-five.
Okay, good, thank you, that's all I have.
Great, with that, would the applicant like to approach and discuss the proposal? Be sure to state your name and address for the record, please.
There we go. Paul Robinson with Rachel Development, four-one-eighty Napier Court, St. Michael. Jeff covered so much of what I'm going to present, but I do think it probably could augment what he said, so I'm going to focus on some of the differences and not everything that Jeff already covered, okay? So, this is just our team, I just thought I'd put it back up, so I'm Paul, I'm the development director for Rachel Development. It is a joint project between Rachel and Vincent and we've done a number of projects, both senior and apartments together. So, just, we're back, we were here a year, it was basically, we started this process about a year ago and then went through modifying our initial application, came before you in the spring last year and kind of maybe good or bad luck, we came right at the same time as another applicant that was doing apartment across from us. And I think that at that time, we heard both from the council and the planning commission that there was a desire to stay more true to the two thousand and fifteen PUD and have, and not give up all that commercial space. And so, we basically withdrew, drew our application after the public hearing. We met with Jeffers Foundation, we kind of, kind of went back to the drawing board as a group and then put another plan together. We met with the EDA in August, just to kind of make sure we are on the right track before we developed final plans. And so, they gave us the indication that we were on the right track, we went back, put our plans together and that's why we're here tonight. So, that's kind of the history of kind of how we got here. Jeff also showed you the two plans, but when you see, I just put them next to each other, you can see our previous plan had the two apartments and our current plan has the one apartment and the one, and then preserves that commercial space that's kind of always been there in that two thousand and fifteen plan, it exists today. Maybe I'll mention on this slide, so what we're intending to do is correct that entire red area so that anybody could build a building anywhere in that area. So, we're showing a concept of two different buildings, but somebody could come up with a building in the middle or on the side or anywhere in that area, so that's our intention. This is just to kind of highlight where this PUD, the amendment was previously, so Jeff went through this, so there was basically commercial spread out over three locations, the east and the west side of Outlet C and then on Outlet B. Same was true for residential, it kind of spread out all over, so we had eighty-seven thousand square feet of commercial, there was three hundred and eighteen units of residential. What happened is, you know, there was a hundred and ninety-six units approved on Outlet B, so that went from a mix to all residential and there was the daycare approved Outlet C, so that went from a mix basically to more all commercial. And then the middle was back, kind of what we're coming back to you with is really what was still left in the plan, which was a mix of residential, so that southern area being residential and then that northern area, and we're showing a concept of thirty-five-thousand four hundred square feet, but it could range anywhere to thirty to forty thousand depending on what somebody eventually builds. Just going through our proposal, Jeff really went through this, so there was a hundred and forty-unit apartment, there's a hundred and forty spaces underneath, surface parking, our commercial area. There's that concept, this is a concept for a two-story office building, that's a concept of a ten thousand square foot kind of retail service area and totaling thirty-five thousand. So, we have ponding there, so one of those ponds is a subsurface pond underneath the parking lot. Our intention with this is to make it more marketable as a commercial area, so when somebody comes in to develop the commercial, the ponding that we're building with this phase accommodates that commercial development of the future. So I think it gives you a leg up in the future to get that done. And then it's surrounded by quite a bit of open space and I did, on one slide I got rid of, but there's that pond, it's kind of, that one of the council members was talking about, is still, is up there, one of the planning commissioners. Just looking at the landscaping, we're preserving quite a bit of the trees right along the channel, the Prior Lake Channel as well as Long Fountain Drive, planting a number of conifers, deciduous trees and shrubs and perennials, I think it'll be pretty attractive inside. Just to understand the parking, and I can maybe touch on that guest parking comment. So in the, in the structure itself, under, there'll be, or on the surface, there'll be ninety-eight parking stalls, they're not designated for a unit, so any of those stalls in essence could become guest parking, depending on what's being used. Under the building, there's a hundred and forty stalls, those will be designated one per unit, so those will be just for people who live in the building. So that was a total of two hundred and eighteen. It is one-point-seven, so the city standard was two-point-oh. What we had, what we generally shoot for is one-point-five and I did look up a staff report on Carlsen, they had one-point-three-two. So that was what, that was what was in the final report, so I'm not sure, maybe it ended up being higher. Sorry, Jeff. And then if you look to the future commercial area, we're showing about a hundred and ten surface stalls. You can see some of the parking that we're building with the apartment is actually going to be allocated to the commercial area. The thirty-one underground stalls for a total of a hundred and forty-one. We did provide a parking memo with our packet or with our submittal and in that parking memo, it says that they're not accounting for any of the shared parking, but when you account for the shared parking, this is actually pretty well parked because when, like what Jeff said, as far as just people, you know, apartment people are being there on the weekends, commercial aren't, you know, all those off, you know, during the day, off-day shared parking arrangements. I'm just going to go through a few examples, I think we did this, I showed you these last time too, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time, but these are just examples, maybe not exactly what we're building here, but just some of the styling and detailing that we've done in different developments. This one's in Rogers, this one's in Richfield, this has got a little bit more of an urban vibe to it. We did, not that long ago, just down from our Jeffers Pond, this Norbella Senior Center. And then this is again our rendering, so it's a modern-style, four-story, flat-roof building, has a mix of nice, high-quality materials, this is a pretty standard material mix in a very, you know, that's used through nice suburbs throughout the Twin Cities. The building itself comes with a nice design and amenity package that's for, you know, high-end living both inside and outside. It's, and then again, what as Jeff mentioned, the highest point on the building is fifty-two feet. This is pretty similar in massing and height to the Carlsen plan that was approved across the street. And these are just some pictures of actual buildings built with the similar styling and some of the similar materials. And then just touching on the kinds of amenities, we're going to have the dog park, these are similar to what we had before, there's a pool facility, there's an outdoor living, grilling, hangout area, bocce ball court. Inside, what we like is this kind of, this amenity area kind of gets tucked into the corner of the building, so there's, you know, a fitness area and a community room, kitchen, there's indoor/outdoor bar, there's of course a mail center, there's a place for conference rooms and working, a game room and then all of the other kinds of amenities you'd expect in a nicely laid-out facility like this. So, we think it'll be a great place to live. So, in summary, we've listened to the concerns, we've adapted our plan, we think this plan satisfies the housing target, so we gets the, like what I think one of the commissioners said, it just brings you to the limit of the residential that you need and within Jeffers Pond, provides a pad-ready commercial site, which I think is a benefit and is consistent with the two thousand and fifteen plan amendment. So, with that, I will, happy to take any questions now or after the public hearing.
Thank you very much, Paul, I appreciate the detailed information and do appreciate you taking a lot of the comments we had from the last time. So, any questions for Paul from the commissioners? Commissioner Tennyson?
Yeah, just a quick question and maybe this is in the document, is there any consideration for electric charging stations for vehicles?
It's a good question, I do believe that we've accommodated, I don't know the number, it's on our, I don't have that in front of me, but we do have some in the one-hundred-and-forty unit under the building, yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else? Oh, Commissioner Ringstead?
Getting back to the parking, I noticed you've got one stall underground for every apartment. Is that an optional add-on for residents or is that, or the parking space underground going to be included in whatever the lease payment is?
It's a good question, I don't know how we handle that typically, I usually think it's one per unit, but I think people have the flexibility to barter that within the units.
So, they don't have to take it if they don't want, perhaps?
It's a little bit out of my league, I'm not, I don't manage that part of our, that's not part of my role in this group.
Thanks.
Sorry.
That's all right.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you very much, Paul. With that, can I get a motion and a second to open tonight's public hearing on this item?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Chutter, a second by Kallberg, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone who would like to address the commission, please come up and state your name and address for the record and if it's not green on the little microphone, touch it, if it's not green on the little microphone, touch it.
Okay, thank you for the time. My name is Ryan O'Keefe, one-four-three-zero-four, Enclave Court. I just have some questions and then I have some concerns. I was here at the last meeting when the other apartment complex got approved. These letters that get sent out to all the neighborhoods, is there a lead time of when people can expect to get these? Just for example here is that this, this letter, it was prepared on the eighteenth of November and this letter is not leaving Prior Lake, it's going two-point-six miles to our neighborhood and I got it on December third, leaving us nine days before this meeting. The meeting before last time, we got a seven-day notice. Now with people with kids and activities and sports and all that type of stuff, their schedules are, you know, scheduled out weeks in advance and for people to get a week notice on this, I think we could step that up next time and do a little better job on that. And as far as something this big that is going to impact so many families in this neighborhood, last time in April, there was only three commissioners here, not seven, right? That's less than fifty percent of your planning commission that was here and voted to pass that building. I think it's a pretty big deal that something that's this important and the amount of people that were here, not as many people tonight, but this place was almost packed last time. And to have only three planning commissioners here, it didn't sit well with a lot of people.
Can I address that, Ryan? Actually, as you see, there's seven now, there's actually five voting commissioners and we've added two alternates, so if we don't, just from that situation, we've addressed that.
Okay, I didn't know, I just saw your website and it said seven, so.
Yeah, so it's actually five voting members and two alternates.
Another question I had, and I don't know if the city has done a study on this at all, but what is this going to do to our property values of our houses? Right? We built, I was the last one to build in the enclave in two thousand and fifteen and every year our house values have gone up. So my concern is now with these two massive apartment buildings, what is that going to do to our property value at the end of the day? If I want to sell my house, do I have to be worried that it's not going to be worth what it is now because people don't want to look at these apartment buildings? Anybody? Do we have a study or can anybody speak on that?
Address that.
To address that comment, as I said previously and you've seen some of the concept plans, the two thousand and five plan for Jeffers Pond has always designated this area for high-density residential and commercial uses, ever since two thousand and five, before any house, anything was built into Jeffers Pond, the streets, the networks, everything in this area has been designated for these types of uses to go in and so there, I guess what I'm getting at is this has been more than two, nearly two decades in the making from a development aspect standpoint. Market values and property values fluctuate, they go up and down. The, we, whether we put a commercial use in here, whether we put a high-density use in here, whether we put a low-density use in here, there, you're going to have fluctuations in market value, but it's not necessarily going to be just because of the types of users that go in there, it can be because of just the aspects of where the market and where the economy is on any given moment and stuff.
Yeah, there was just a concern of many of our neighbors that just had that concern, so I just wanted to ask. Another thing that was brought up last time that we really didn't get any answers on was the traffic situation here. Now you're going to have these two massive buildings here and you're only going to have three exits to get out of it. You can either go on Jeffers Parkway, take a right to go east on forty-two, or you come down Fountain Hills and you can take a left across two lanes of traffic to go north or take a right to go towards the lake. Okay? Now what people are going to find out with these buildings in that roundabout is now they have another option, they can go down Jeffers Parkway, hit a right on McKenna and go down there and there's a stoplight there. So I know you guys had quoted a study last time from two thousand and fifteen that you said those two, two-lane roads could handle eighteen thousand cars a day, eighteen thousand cars in that residential neighborhood, which I thought was outrageous, but if that's the survey you guys came up with, then I guess we have to live with it. But I, it's a, it's a very big concern, the traffic that's going to get caught or get blown through there. Right? We have, when you take a left or right onto Enclave, we have a sign about this big that says no outlet, right? So as people go down our road that don't live there, speed down there, hit around the cul-de-sac and speed back out of there, it's kind of a concern for all the neighbors, right? We have, I think, thirty-two houses on our street and I would say two-thirds have kids that are in high school or younger, right? We have four or five buses that come by there every single day, twice a day, right? And then now you were talking about last meeting that they can, the room on the east side of that Little Explorers is enough to put a Trader Joe's-sized type building and some other commercial storefrontages in there too. And to not be able to have any type of light or anything from Fountain Hills onto twenty-one, I mean, you're looking at twelve and a half cars a minute going through there, if we break it down compared to your study that you guys had. So that's just, it's just a big concern in the neighbors, in the neighborhood too. Start times for these commercial projects, when they built that Little Explorers, what is the city's official word on start times for commercial jobs? Seven o'clock, eight o'clock? What is the start time?
Nick, do you want to take that one, do you oversee that?
Yeah, Chair Teeman, I can take that question. Our construction hours are Monday through Friday, seven AM to seven PM.
Okay.
Our construction hours are Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and then Saturday, 8 to 5.
Is there somebody that regulates that, if, if, you know, people are starting earlier, or who takes that on?
If they are starting earlier, you'll need to call the police.
Okay. Okay.
Or running later.
I just know that the Little Explorers, those people would drop off heavy equipment, bang, and dump trucks, you know, 6, 6:30 in the morning, you know, everybody's got kids and dogs and everything, and, you know, to not abide by the rules, I mean, I don't want to call the cops on anybody, everybody's gotta make a living, but I mean, if they're not gonna abide by it, then, then obviously we don't have a choice, right? And then, let's see here. I just wanted to make one more comment on the meeting that was here last time. We had both neighborhoods from our neighborhood, across the pond, and people on Jeffers Parkway that were, that were here, and one of your commissioners had made the comment that no matter what the outcome, I was voting for yes on both projects. Now, I kind of found that to be kind of a slap in the face to everybody that had taken their time out of their night, you know, just take time away from their families, to come here and then have that happen. So, what are we doing? If that's the case, then you're gonna have an answer before anybody gets up here and has a chance to talk, then why bother coming? Right? So, I just, that rubbed me the wrong way, it rubbed a lot of people the wrong way, that that happened because they took their time out of their night to come here and voice their opinions and their concerns, and a lot of the questions that we had never got answered. So, I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Would anyone else like to address the commission? I'll ask one more time, any other, anyone else to address the commission? Okay, with that, I will take a motion and a second to close tonight's public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Ringstead and Cheddar, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Tonight's public hearing is closed. We'll go to Commissioner comments, I'll just start with Commissioner Finstamacher.
I guess I just see some of the, the concerns put out there, and then what the previous review had, and I see this as a good, good solution for all the changes that were suggested, and it's meeting the residential versus commercial, all the guidelines that has been put forward, so I guess I am in favor of it.
Commissioner Chenison?
I would just say I appreciate the, the mix of commercial and residential in the space and alignment with the, you know, the previous plan.
Commissioner Johnson?
Just a couple of comments, I think the building's attractive, I think the, the mix of materials and facades, although it doesn't meet the standards set forth, I think it meets the intent, and I think the height requirement also adds to the look of the building, which I think is acceptable with the overall average still staying under. I also am a proponent for commercial in that space, so them adding kind of a pad-ready commercial along 42, I think definitely makes a project more attractive. I hope that there is plenty of, you know, or adequate vehicle access through that one spot to get back into that commercial, and that's not a concern down the road. But I think it looks like a good project, I, I do think hopefully the next time we meet on a PUD for Jeffers Pond, it is for commercial, and not just all of the residential pieces, I feel like you've got, you know, started with 270,000 square feet of commercial, and reel it back to 87,000 square feet, although only 15,000 square feet has been built, is a little concerning, I mean, the market's going to demand what it's going to demand, but I feel like we've been on a path that's been very heavy residential, so to get that piece wrapped up and then start to focus on commercial, I think would be good. I would also like to thank the gentlemen for speaking. I, for one, I'll speak for myself, I think that the community involvement in these types of projects is huge, I think people that live in, or around, or just even in our community should come to these meetings and speak up and voice their concerns and be heard. I was not at the last meeting, but I know that my fellow commissioners do take comments to heart, and we take that into our consideration, so thank you for speaking. That's all I got.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner Ringstead?
I think, piggyback off of Commissioner Johnson's comment or question with regard to the commercial remaining space, I believe the city council earlier this year issued some relatively firm statements that they also expect that the remaining square footage be commercial, and as I mentioned earlier, that this, it appears will close out the residential portion of Jeffers. I agree with the intent of the architectural guidelines are being met with this, this is a plan that is different and improved from what we saw earlier this spring, and thank the applicant for that, and as such, I'll be supporting it tonight.
Yeah, I also support this development, I think it's a nice addition, and a needed addition in our community, actually, and I appreciate their efforts to really address the comments and the thoughts from the last meeting, so, that, Commissioner Cheddar?
Yeah, I also, I think we've come a long way from where we were in April, and I appreciate the applicant's efforts to address the concerns that were raised, and listen to the feedback. I also appreciate the, kind of, I think, awareness to the bigger picture that you've demonstrated in your presentation, it looks like a quality product with a well-defined vision for how the commercial fits into it, and I appreciate the pad-ready message in the PUD. So I, I'm very much in favor of the project, as to the gentleman that approached the commission, I think, you know, this is the second go at this, based off of the feedback, and I think the, the comments around the mail delivery in the city of Prior Lake isn't something that we can affect, but I have confidence in the city staff's ability to put things in the mail, our ability to get them in a timely manner is a different matter, so I'm glad that we're engaged in participating in this process, but I support this project.
Thank you, Commissioner Kalberg.
Well, we've been around and around on this, we end up now with a single building rather than two apartment buildings, and brought in some needed commercial space. The concern about the access off of the roundabout shouldn't be a problem because it's a standard four-way roundabout, whether that was a street or an entrance to a parking lot, it still is gonna work the same way. I think the building would be an attractive addition to the area, it does screen the commercial area from the residential, single-family and townhouse areas to the south, so I think it's a good use of the property.
Thank you, well, with that, I will take a motion and a second recommending approval of the major amendment to the Jeffers Pond PUD, subject to the listed conditions.
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, motion and second, Cheddar and Johnson, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you, all, I see no old business or new business, any announcements?
The only announcement for you tonight, obviously, is we are in our winter months, you don't have any scheduled planning commission meetings in the fourth week of the month, and so your next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting is on January 9th, I believe we do have public, two public hearings, we'll probably likely have scheduled for that in the evening, so do plan on January 9th for your next meeting, that's it.
Great, thank you, with that, I will take a motion and a second to close tonight's meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, motion second, Cheddar and Kalberg, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, tonight's meeting is adjourned, thank you.